Simsbury Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for July 17th Order. We have a full set of regular members here, so we don't need an alternate. What time is there?
When you recuse, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We have a... An appointment recommendation to the DRB to replace Tony Drapelit, and I'd like to add that to our agenda so we can vote on that and help the DRB with their quorum problem. Can I have a motion to...
Are we adding it under General Commission?
Pardon?
Under General Commission, is that what you're...
Under General Commission business.
A move that we add to the agenda under General Commission Business, the appointment of a member of the Design Review Board?
I'll say that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Passes six, nothing. Anybody have any comments on the minutes of July 19th? I found nothing.
They look clean to me. They were... Looked clean to me.
Yeah. They were clean to me. So we'll adopt those as submitted. Okay. The first order of business is a public hearing. Application seventeen twenty-eight. Mr. Secretary.
Application seventeen twenty-eight of Diana and Paul Booton, owners for special exception pursuant to Article VII, Section C dot one of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for a personal training space, home occupation on a property located at fourteen Pondside Lane, West Simsbury, assessors map D eleven, block one fifty-one, lot oh thirteen, zone R forty.
Thank you. Do we have the applicant here? Yes. To care to...
Diana Booton.
Pardon?
Diana Booton.
Yes. Diana. Do you want to tell us what you're planning?
Sure. So, I'll stand up so you can... I have a personal bar training business in my home. And what I do is I provide ballet fitness. I provide more personal training in a one-on-one in a small space, so it would be five, less than five people. And I'm not sure if you have your notes here, but we have the parking space and we have that all allotted that we would have six parking spots that fit in that space. So that's it.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
Just a comment. It looks like you had mailed this out to all of your neighbors.
Yes. Yes.
And all feedback's good?
It's good. We actually have two to three neighbors that are clients as well that are interested in the business, so, yeah.
Beneficial.
Absolutely.
They won't need parking.
Yes. Yet they are walking, so I wouldn't have a issue for them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this application?
I was... Sorry. My name's Lisa McLaughlin. I'm actually a client of hers and a friend. I just have to say, I think it's a great idea that she is available to have the class and any sessions in her home. She's always been available for one-on-one. For me, I am a busy mom of four. Just, I've been in my own business, so going to classes during the day isn't always ideal for me. She's more than accommodating for that. And I'm a big person on small one-on-one classes. And that's what she offers. She's great at everything she does, and I definitely support her and her business. And I would really love it if you guys approved her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Coe?
Yeah. Joan Coe, twenty-six, Whitcomb Drive. I just have one question. Does that... You know, it's fine. I do all kinds of sports, so I'm not concerned about that. But is this a licensed activity? Does somebody have to license you in order for you to provide this?
No. It is not a license. I'm actually...
This question should address the commission, please.
Oh, to the board. That is so.
Yes.
Yes. I would like you to find out if this is a licensed activity and whether there's any oversight as far as what she's providing.
Okay. Could you answer the question for us, please?
Absolutely. We are... So far, what I'm teaching is a certification. It's not a license. But in order for me to provide a group fitness type of environment, I have an ACE group certification, which allows me... It's nationally accredited. It allows me to do a group fitness class for up to thirty people. But obviously, in my home, I'm only doing five. So I have a bar certification. I have a spinning certification. I have a women's fitness certification. So that's what I would do.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this application?
Jamie.
Jamie?
Ms. Chairman, just with regards to the application, we need to complete that with a... The sign that they gave it.
Yes.
Which I believe the applicant has with her this evening.
I do.
You do have a staff report in your package. With regards to administration of the application, has a special exception. You have opened the hearing tonight. You have thirty-five days to continue the back hearing. You have a public hearing. You have sixty-five days to make your decision. If you feel you have sufficient information to act on the application, it would be a staff's recommendation that you close the hearing, and then that would trigger your sixty-five day timeframe to make a decision. Do you have a draft motion? And do you have an action?
Okay.
Not sure we have that draft motion.
It's there. It's there.
It's the last page.
Well, we wouldn't consider that till after we close the public hearing, so... I don't see any reason not to close the public hearing. Does anybody else? Nope. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Mike Doyle.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay. The motion is carried. The application... Or the public hearing is closed on this application. We can address it later in the meeting after our public hearings. The next public hearing is application seventeen thirty.
Application seventeen thirty of Andrew Quirk, P.E., Kratzert Jones and Associates, Inc., Agent Antonio's LLC, owner for special exception pursuant to Article VII, Section E six of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to allow for a restaurant in a B one zone with a drive-through facility on the property located at twelve twenty-five to twelve forty-five and twelve sixty-one, Hot Meadow Street, assessors map one oh five, block four oh three, lot nineteen, zone B two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before Mr. Quirk starts this evening, just in essence, is two applications. One for a special exception for a drive-through and then also a site plan approval for the facility. The property and application is referred to the Design Review Board. Design Review Board meetings canceled this evening, so it would be staff's recommendation. I know Mr. Quirk wants to do a presentation today, but in any subject matter you discuss from administrative standpoint is to continue the public hearing this evening. I think you've discussed a potential special meeting on August seventh, which is two weeks from this evening. Design Review has a tentative special meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth of this month, so they would perhaps review and make a recommendation prior to a special meeting if you were intending to hold that on the seventh. If you continue this hearing this evening, you have to stay in time and place. So that's why it's important.
Right. Okay. Mr. Quirk?
Good evening, Chair and commission members. My name is Andrew Quirk, professional engineer in principle with Kratzert Jones and Associates with offices in Sudington, Connecticut. I'm here this evening also with the applicant Scott Fanning, applicant in principle with Trade American Donuts and the property owner Steve Antonio. As Jamie Rabbit indicated, I'm prepared to do a full presentation, if you'd like, to give all the information and feedback. And then if there's questions or additional information, be prepared to have that for the continuance of the public hearing, if that's what the commission would like to do. Or I can do more of an abbreviated presentation. We do not have tonight the architect, although that's more of a Design Review Board issue, I suppose. But other than that, I believe we have all the information you need. So I'd like to try to introduce the application unless you do otherwise.
Everybody?
Okay. So the proposal...
There are... Excuse me, but I believe there are some questions that the Design Review Board has.
Correct.
So, go ahead.
Sure. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a restaurant with a drive-through facility in a B two zone. The notification of the sign of the public hearing was posted at the site, and I can submit the affidavit. Just to... Again, this is the relocation of the existing Dunkin' Donuts facility just to the south of Eli Road to this new location. The existing site is shown in your package on the overall survey, which is a parcel of three point three five acres known as twelve twenty-five, twelve through twelve forty-five, and twelve sixty-one Hot Meadow. The site is bordered by Eli Lane to the south, Hot Meadow to the east, the Wagner... The former Wagner site to the north, and residential properties to the west. In the survey, it shows the existing buildings, including the retail building at the intersection, as well as the office building, which houses an insurance business. Those buildings and associated parking and infrastructure are to remain. And that's shown here. The... Here's the insurance building here, which I'll talk about in terms of the architecture as well. This existing building here, previously for automotive uses, is the site location for the proposed Dunkin' Donuts. So this building would be coming down. And the proposal is to relocate the existing Dunkin' Donuts facility just to the south at eleven ninety-five Hot Meadow to this proposed location of twelve sixty-one Hot Meadow Street. Sheet S two in your stat shows the details of the layout for the new improved site. Presently, the entire site is paved, or building area. The proposed site will introduce a number of landscaped areas, more defined parking and access, and better circulation than trafficuing in the present Dunkin' Donuts site. The building is a new nineteen hundred square foot building. It'll be here, Hot Meadow Street to the east. There'll be a ten-car required queue from the drive-through pickup window, dedicated queue along this area here. Entire site will have a one-way circulation so as to avoid any traffic conflicts within the site, with nineteen parking spaces provided, five adjacent to the building, and fourteen along the north boundary. A dedicated bypass and exit lane around the site, as well as we've provided an interconnection to the remainder of the site as we expect those... That site to be redeveloped as well and want to have them interconnected. We'll be working with DOT for an encroachment permit for the changes to the driveway. Presently, this is... This entire area is open. There's a small island in the center, but other than that, the entire area is open access, and we want to define that. And I think there'd be significant safety improvements for doing so. We've introduced significant landscaping. Presently, the entire site is sixty-six percent impervious. We'll be reducing that to sixty percent. That's for the entire three point three... Three point five acres, bringing it closer to the forty percent requirement. We're introducing a mix of flowering dogwoods, black birch, rhododendrum, holly and junipers along the streetscape, as well as screening evergreen plantings around the perimeter, along the property line and the lease lines. We're requesting this commission to allow for a five-foot change in the parking setback. About two or three months ago, we were... It's before you for the text amendment to allow for a five-foot change in the parking setback in non-residential zones. This is all business zone on both sides of the property line. And the request is to... The requirement's for a fifteen-foot setback from the property line to the parking limit, and we're requesting a five-foot change in that and providing the additional landscaping to offset the area that would have been landscaped. I have some alternative layouts to show if that five-foot change was not granted, what the layout would look like. These are all the same. And on that layout, you'll see on the westerly side, to accommodate the total number of parking, the parking field would have to go much further to the west. And also, we would not be able to fit the five parking spaces along the building. So by allowing the five-foot change, we're able to actually more efficiently use the pavement to provide the nineteen spaces, rather than having additional pavement to the rear to provide the same number of spaces. So we feel it's a more efficient layout. It provides the spaces. Ideally, we want to have spaces adjacent to the building, the handicap accessible spaces, convenience to the patrons, as always, as well as just having it a more compact layout for the site. We've provided additional landscaping along the north property line with evergreen cedars, as well as shrubs for an understory mix. And if the site to the north were also developed, there would be a continuous buffer from both sides of that property line. Presently, today, this is paved the entire way across. It's just to the side of the... I can see it. That would be this area here between the two buildings, which is entirely paved between the two. I also have some layouts for concepts of the interconnection of the site. The Dunkin' Donuts development has since changed. You'll see more detailed plans for what we've submitted. But these are to show with the other two buildings why we're providing the interconnection and what those parking layouts may look like. So this is the entire site and those interconnections.
This is providing the insurance?
That's correct. Right. And on these sheets here, you'll see the insurance building and that parking layout overlaid with a slightly different Dunkin' Donuts layout, but the concept being how each of the uses and the buildings and their parking fields would interconnect through this location here. Those layouts also do not take into account... They had a zero setback to the property line for the parking. One point, the thought was it's existing pavement today, that the site could be redeveloped without, you know, changing that parking setback. And we worked very closely with town staff, and it was recommended that we seek a text amendment and work to have a more reasonable compromise on the landscaping, rather than simply trying to just leave the existing pavement and not providing vegetative screen between the two properties. This is a similar sketch. Again, the purpose of these sketches is just to show the interconnection to the remainder of the site. We've provided a stormwater management report for the site. By reducing the imperviousness of the site, again, with all of this green area, is introduced landscaping and green space within the site. So just the nature of converting pavement to this green space, we have a reduction in stormwater runoff. So the stormwater management plan was a little bit different. Also tried to address stormwater quality and looked at the rates of runoff to Route ten, which, again, working with DOT, they're going to want to see what those changes are. The stormwater management report shows a forty-eight to sixty percent reduction in peak flows to Route ten, again, primarily due to the introduction of impervious areas. We did soil testing on the site. There's very pervious soils on the site, very gravelly, sandy soils. There's two proposed drywells. We're using sheet runoff from the site to those drywells. And then any overflow, which was modeled for the larger storms, would continue in the gutter line of Route ten to the catch basin right here on Route ten. The proposed store would have the same hours of operation as the existing store, five AM to nine PM. It's served by public sewer and water, which are available to the site. And we've begun discussions with WPCA. The signage for the site is indicated on sheet D one with a freestanding sign, as well as the building signage shown on the architectural elevations. And we'll be providing more information on that through Design Review Board and our architect to see. So specifically to the special exception, I looked at the standards that you have outlined in Article seven, section D number ten, for the items to be reviewed by the commission for determining if it's appropriate to allow a special exception for the restaurant use. So I'll try to go through those now and provide you the information for that decision. Item A, regarding the need for such a use, this being a relocation of an existing successful restaurant use, we feel there is a need in the area, and it's more of a replacement than a new use for the area. Item B, regarding the neighborhood, we feel the use is in harmony with the present and future development plans of the area. We understand there's significant redevelopment plans in the area, and we've taken that into account with the architecture, the layout, and interconnection of the sites. Location of the site has been designed to be in harmony, again, with the adjacent buildings. On the cover sheet, you have exposed building elevation, which takes characteristics from the adjacent white colonial building. That is not the standard protocol of a Dunkin' Donuts building, but we worked closely with the architect to design something that's more in harmony with the colonial style of the adjacent building. We feel the site is a great improvement to the current traffic circulation at the present store. The drive-through at the present store was not initially accounted for in the design of that site, whereas this, we've done that from the beginning, providing a proper ten-car queue, adequate stacking, interconnection of the site, and adequate access to Route ten. Item F, there's available water and sewer. The site plans address the signing, lighting, dedicated loading space, and landscaping. And item H, we've included vegetative buffers to protect adjacent properties. So at this time, I'd take any questions, if you'd like, on the presentation.
Go ahead.
Commission members have questions of the applicant?
Has any discussion with the property owner to the north about a consolidated driveway agreement been made?
On some of the plans that you'll see, the two overall schematic plans, it shows...
It shows it to the south, but it doesn't show anything to the Wagner property.
There is. I don't know if it shows up well.
No. It shows behind.
And the one to the south is only one-way?
This plan here, the overall larger...
Yeah.
Is to have an interconnection to the rest. The thought being that the interconnection with that larger development to the west would be better, further away from Route ten. So the interconnection was contemplated.
Any other questions or comments?
I think this is a much, much improved plan from the current location.
Great.
Current location, you did what you could with the site.
Right. So of course, we would love to be able to act on the use portion of it, but we understand if continuation is required.
The question is, this application is for a special exception. There still is a requirement for a site plan amendment. Would it be feasible for us to act on this special exception and not on the site plan amendment because DRB hasn't seen it? Jamie?
Staff were advised against that because if DRB made a subtle change of hearing, while only you as a site manager were the one, your staff would have been... Your plan amendment, that perhaps affected the drive-through. It would make the...
Okay.
I don't think you're expediting the process by... Or not expediting the process by not acting on one versus the other. This is... I think your efforts to hold a special meeting in August are...
Okay. Does anyone in the public have comments on this application? Yes, sir?
The only comment I have is my understanding that the Economic Development Commission of Simsbury is interested in developing new businesses. What advantage is it to the citizens, to myself, that we just move from one building to another? That doesn't seem to accomplish anything as far as economic development. It's just to move.
That's probably a better question for the Economic Development Commission than us.
No. I just... You asked me. I'm putting my input into it. He asked for the public, and I'm the public. I'm a citizen of Simsbury, and I think we... It's incumbent upon me to mention these things that are going on. One agency says one thing, and the other agency says something else. And that's not what I'm here for this evening, but I feel that as long as this came up, that we should at least let the people know that we're not going to pay checkers. We're just moving businesses around. Thank you for the...
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. I'm Chris Barnett. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Commission. And I would like to speak to that. The goals of the Economic Development Commission are to grow the grand list.
Chris, we're having a public hearing on an application.
I'm commenting on Robert.
I know, but...
Okay. So I'm directing it to you.
Okay.
Okay. So the economic... I'm not sure how I'm supposed to be directing this to you. So the Economic Development Commission's mission is to grow the grand list. I think an opportunity to open a brand-new building and potentially replace where the current Dunkin' Donuts is with a new tenant does seek that mission by growing the grand list here in town. Because it's a building that is not being used right now. There is no taxes on capital equipment or anything that's in that building because it's non-existent, and it does grow the grand list.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other comments on the... From the public? Okay. I think...
I have a question. Is this part of the special exception to go beyond the forty percent impervious? Okay. But where does that come into the application process?
Open discussion. There's existing components of the site with regards to non-conformities of the surface.
So they're reducing the impervious surface amount, but not to within the current regulations? Is that what I understand?
I believe Mr. Quirk has done that analysis.
Yes. On sheet S two, I believe it is. It shows the table for the coverage. Presently, sixty-six percent of the site impervious. And that's, again, sixty-six percent of the three point five acre site, not just the area that's being reconstructed. And we're bringing that down to sixty percent, albeit within the area... The developed area is approximately one acre, roughly. Have to check the numbers exactly, but it's a little less than an acre. We do meet that for the lease area, the forty percent for the lease area. So that would be something, I think, progressively as the site redevelops that I think would be brought into conformity as each site redevelops or seeks a special exception. But in this case, we're reducing it from sixty-six to sixty percent.
This is a leased parcel. It's not a transfer. So there are still areas of this parcel that are controlled by Mr. Antonio that come in for that consideration.
Got it. This is just one part of it?
Yes.
Table this until the August seventh for a special meeting?
If I could, just want to make sure that we're covered in terms of just procedures on that. Is the August seventh meeting definitive? Because if not, I do... I'm prepared to give an extension if we need to.
Ms. Chairman, from an administrative standpoint, we would welcome an extension from the applicant just out of an outside chance of a quorum issue we do not meet in August, so...
Right. And that's of both extensions.
And you only meet once in September on the eighteenth, so you would not have sufficient time under statute for votes in thirty-five days.
And that's for both appropriations?
Okay. We will table this until our...
Continue the public hearing.
Continue the public hearing until August seventh.
Seven PM in this room.
Seven PM in this room for a special meeting. So can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next application is 1732. Let me read the call, Mr. Secretary.
He's going to get me on this one. Application 1732, Malika John-Balay. John-Balay? Penny, how you say your last name?
Benny.
No, it's his daughter. BMG Properties LLC, owner for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Town of Simsbury zoning regulations to change from a beer and wine liquor permit to a full liquor license at Benny's on the property located at 562 Hot Meadow Street, Assessor's Map G12, Block 132, Lot 36, Zone B1.
Yes?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Benny Zambale. We're looking to get permit, full permit for liquor for inside, outside, in my restaurant. We have already, we have for beer and wine, but we wanted to make it a little bit bigger, which is mean that's not going to be sitting bar, just serving bar.
Okay, and it's inside and outside you're asking for?
What?
You're asking for permission to use your outside...
Yes, inside, outside.
...as well as outside?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Commissioners?
Do we have this affidavit?
Okay, are there any comments from the public on this application? Hearing none. We have any more questions to, should we close this public hearing?
Well, so he said there would not be a bar. It would just be servers.
No sitting bar.
Okay.
Just serving bar.
And the outside?
Yeah, patio.
You have, and is it defined patio area?
Yeah, we have railings, everything, it's flowers, bed flowers, big bed flowers, and it's everything like protected.
On the south side, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just clarifying. I've been there. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have any comments or questions about it? Should we have a motion to close this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, that would probably close the public hearing for application 1732.
Thank you, Mike. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Donna. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So six, nothing passes. We'll close this public hearing. Okay, then we have a application 1733. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benny.
Mr. Chairman, while the applicant's getting prepared, similar to the, you know, Pork's application on Hot Meadow, this is subject for subplan approval and a special exception for the flood plain. Also referred the design review, design review is pending for the 14th of July for a special meeting. Here's your having a meeting scheduled through August 7th, so it would be staff's recommendation again to continue this hearing through the 7th and then table any action on these applications tonight associated with that.
Okay, and we also need an extension from the applicant?
And we are in your seat of that.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Merrick Temmott. I'm a professional engineer, licensed land surveyor, and associate of anchor engineering. Also with me today is the property owner and architect. We also follow, as your staff pointed out, that we follow that conundrum with the design review board, so we understand that this public hearing will be pushed over to August 7th. So I'll be fairly brief. This is one of probably the most straightforward projects you're going to see at this point, so I'll do my best to complicate things for you. Basically, this is Abigail's Restaurant on the corner of Hartford Road and Hot Meadow Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. It's approximately 2.6 acres in a B1 zone. What we're doing here is we are proposing a addition, which a corner of the addition actually encroaches into the one near flood plain. So that is one of the applications that we're here for, is a special exception under that. I'll use the color rendering to point things out for you. Basically, the wetlands line on here was taken off the town of Simsbury official map. And also shown in here is the 100-foot regulated area. Our addition is at the southeast corner of the property. As you can see, it actually falls outside of the regulated area, so we were not needed to go to the Wetlands Commission for this application. The addition is approximately 440, a little bit more, I believe, 160 square feet. And Matthew Montana, our architect, can speak more if there's any questions related to the architecture, but I'm sure that's going to be more for the design review board. The base flood elevation in this area is approximately the 160 contour. The elevation of the first, the finished floor of Abigail's Restaurant is currently at 164.7, so approximately five feet above the flood plain. The proposed addition is actually going to be at the same elevation as the existing building, so we're not lowering it, we're not raising it, we're staying right at the same, which is already outside of the flood area. The encroachment itself is what FEMA calls a minor project. It doesn't really involve too much of an analysis because it falls within certain parameters. But beyond that, what we did also include to is a compensatory storage area for any additional, you know, filling that's going to be happening in that place. We've actually provided an area that is going to be dug out to hold that and mitigate that area, basically. That area shown on this map is actually right in front of the addition here. So as you can see, the building, we're, you probably have better plans, you can see it up front, but we're actually approaching into this area in this corner. By filling this area, we're actually creating a compensatory area for that. As I said, basically, this is a very simple application. You can see where the addition is going. The addition itself is well-needed. The restrooms do need to be upgraded. That is really the ideal location for that. The rear of the property is actually completely within the flood area, so it can't happen there. And I believe there was talk about moving it forward, however, I believe that that was against staff or someone at DRB. With that said, if there's any questions that you have, any architectural questions? I believe on that board, there is a rendering of the addition, if that makes it visual a bit better?
Is this not a slab? That's not just a slab? You're not making... This is the existing, up to this portion right here. This is the addition, which mirrors what's on the opposite side.
There's not a slab, not a cellar, right?
Correct.
It's bigger on the drawings.
It's a little bit longer than what's on the... We literally just took this exact piece and copied it.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's a little longer.
Yes, okay.
And we have that the increased building footprint won't result in any more parking spaces needed?
Yeah, there's no expansion of the dining area, this is just for restrooms. More rehabilitation of the existing restroom to...
Right now, there's two singles, there's a single stall, one for men, one for women. We're putting in three for each.
Looks good.
Something is needed.
Make my wife happy.
Can you put it on the second floor, too?
Okay, so let's have a motion to continue this or to close the public hearing. Oh, did we hear from the public? Anybody care to speak to this? Yes, Mr. Kalishman.
I'm concerned because it's in a flood plain. And I'm a conservationist with my heart, and the only other thing that concerns me is where are the septic tanks for these public, for these facilities going to be located? Are they going to use the existing septic tank? Or they use a sewer?
Must be on city sewer, right?
In other words, you know, when people void or defecate, where does that waste go?
This site is on city sewer. We did send out letters to the WPCA and fire marshal as required, and I have not heard any negative feedback from them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue applications, the public hearing on application 1733 till our special meeting on August 7th at 7:00 PM in this meeting room.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So let's continue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next public hearing is one in which Mike and I, as members of the Performing Arts Center Board, have an interest, and so we're going to...
Do you have a seat, Tom?
Okay, thank you.
Power.
She come back, right?
Good evening, Bob.
Application 17, oh, before we do that, absent the two temporarily discharged members, we'll appoint Tom to fill in for Mike. Okay, application 1735 of Chip Kinarum. Chip, you ready to, you here to speak to that?
Fire. Good evening, Chip Kinarum. I live at Eat Kelly Farm Road. I'm a member of the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center Board. The application today is for a text amendment in the zoning regulations, and we're seeking a, an amendment that would permit temporary camping on town property. And it would do so only with the proviso that the applicant obtain the permission of the Board of Selectmen and obtain a public gathering permit for the use. So it's a very tightly regulated use. I believe the need for this text amendment is that the current zoning regulations don't have an affirmative statement about camping, either positive or negative. The current regulations define camping, they prohibit trailer camps, they prohibit mobile homes, but they don't define whether you can or cannot camp. So this amendment would make it clear that this limited amount of camping is permitted, but it would also establish a very tight regulation for that. Any organization that desired to have camping would have to present that application to the Board of Selectmen and to obtain a public gathering permit. So we believe that that's a very well-defined use. Now, our interest as an organization in this amendment comes from the fact that there have been for a number of years, and there is proposed for this year, uses of the Iron Horse Boulevard property, the Simsbury Meadows, for events which include camping. Now, some of the previous uses have been with some of the marathons, the Boy Scouts camped there to serve the marathon early in the morning when it starts. In other marathons, some of the organizers camped there. And there have been various other camping. There was at one time a bicycle trip where they actually used tents on the site and camped for an overnight, and then part it early in the morning. The particular use that we're interested in this year involves the Two Left Feet Blues Festival, and I've asked tonight that representatives from the Two Left Feet Blues Festival explain to you, number one, what they're doing and what precautions they've taken so that it's understood what the exact proposal is. But as I'm only proposing the text amendment, I'm not focusing on that specifically. To my knowledge, camping has gone on for years in town, at other locations, the town forests, traditionally the Boy Scouts camp there, there are a number of other things. Now, since this is limited to town property, it does not address camping town-wide, but it certainly does address some of the areas which camping have been typical. The next thing I'd like to address is, and I believe staff will inform you shortly, or maybe you already have it, is the planning commission failed to pass a motion for a positive referral. That motion was made to give a positive referral based on the fact that it would promote economic development in the town, and that would be to allow the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center to have these type of arrangements would be an economic benefit, and the vote did not carry on that. After that motion did not carry, the planning commission did not make any further motions. So it comes to you in that status where the planning commission did not find that within the plan of conservation and development, there was a way to address this. I would suggest, at least my review of the plan of conservation and development is it just plain doesn't address this issue, either positive or negative. So I don't think that the planning commission is wrong in not taking a stand on it, that just isn't addressed, that it wasn't, you know, a part of, a part of what was contemplated 10 years ago when that plan was put into effect.
Okay.
Now, with that, I would ask Larry Keel from the Two Left Feet Blues Festival to explain, you know, first, what they do, and two, exactly what the precautions are that they have suggested for this specific proposal.
Good evening. My name is Larry Keel. I live at 35 Minster Brook Drive in Simsbury. I've been a Simsbury resident for 40 years, almost 40 years. I am a member of the Board of the Two Left Feet Blues Festival. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charity. We were organized a few years ago, and our mission is to carry on a blues festival that was started by our founders five years ago. This would be our fifth year. We're carrying on, the first two years is ours. And we have been annually holding a blues festival. Last year, we had it at the Performing Arts Center. It was a one-day festival, and we've been gradually over the years trying to increase the popularity, increase the attendance. And this year, when we set up the festival, we decided that one way to improve the attendance and to really take this to the next level was to go to a multi-day festival. Our founder, Tom and Charlotte, have lots of experience with festivals. Tom, in particular, has done festivals for three years. This is just a blues festival that he's been involved in, so he brings a great deal of experience to this. My involvement was originally because I'm an attorney and I helped them set up their 501(c)(3), and I was pleased to join Tom and Char, and we put together a board. We have, we have one other Simsbury resident on our board. We have Tom and Char from Hartland, Rick is from Farmington, okay? And we have some other, lots of volunteers. We have volunteers from Simsbury, volunteers from, actually downstate as well. But the purpose of our organization is not just to put on a concert. That's not what we do. We are set up to promote the genre of the blues. Now, that may sound like nothing to you, but if you understand music history, the blues is really the basis of American music, is one of the main drivers of American music. So we see it as preserving the history of our music, we see it as promoting music. We go beyond that. We're trying to educate people as to the blues, and we're trying to put on a concert that will not only be following those goals, but will also be a great benefit to our community and to the surrounding towns. Blues festivals, just like jazz festivals, just like folk festivals, are held throughout the country. There are places to gather to listen to music, there are places to gather to be with friends, to meet new people. There is, just like with the other festivals, there are blues festivals that take place Maine, New Hampshire, there's a circuit... There's a circuit of blues festivals, for that matter. We're very fortunate that we have, as our founders, two people who are very well-connected with the national blues community. We actually have, as a person who helps us, a Grammy Award-winning musician and producer. So we have deep connections in the blues community, and we've been able to put on fabulous shows. Now, you may not view some of these people necessarily as blues, but if you were to sit down at one of our shows, you'd be amazed. You know, we're a volunteer organization, and we put on a great performance. The importance of doing this at the Performing Arts Center for us is that we're valley people, for the most part. We're trying to bring this to our community, our greater community, Simsbury, Grammy, Avon. We hope that this will reach beyond the town of Simsbury. But I'm a Simsbury guy. Jim Bittenmore is a Simsbury guy. We tried doing this down at Powder Ridge because we thought that would be a good idea because Powder Ridge was a festival location from when we were kids, which, of course, never happened. It didn't work down there. It wasn't our home. This is our home. It's working here. So this year, we've asked, as part of our process, and we've been working with the Performing Arts Center, who've been great with us, to do this as a three-day festival. And in order to do this as a three-day festival, we've asked to have camping as an ancillary part of the festival. Camping, because a blues festival, like a jazz festival, like a folk festival, requires that people come from all over the region. Talbot Mountain Music Festival brings people from all over the state of Connecticut, mostly the greater Hartford area. A blues festival is a little bit less, especially at this stage of development, but we really need to bring people from all over the Northeast. We advertise in blues magazines. We're on the radio. We're going to have billboards. So we are attracting people from all over the Northeast. And actually, we've got people who come up from Pennsylvania. So it's a local festival with a regional reach. In order to be, in order to get that regional reach, people are coming up. We have hotels that we work with. But a lot of people, and I want to point this out, that a blues festival is not... The typical person that goes to a blues festival is fifty-five and over, okay? So those people... Those people, us people. When we go to these festivals, we don't... You know, some of us stay in hotels. Some of us bring our RVs. So we have RVs that are worth more than my house that want to come to this festival. At least, that's the crowd that we're trying to attract. There'll be some... We're looking for some tent camping. We're looking for some RV parking. And in order to do that, we've worked closely. Our board and Tom Vincent have worked closely to make sure that we've set it up in a way so that we've thought of everything, at least we believe we've thought of everything, all contingencies, so that, just like anybody who's done any camping or backpacking throughout their lives, as I did as a younger man, leave no trace. We want to come in, we want to have a great time. And we're going to leave, we're going to leave no trace. We're not going to damage the wetlands. We're going to be very careful. We're not going to leave garbage behind us. Everything's been planned out. We've got emergency medical setup. We've got police, fire. We have to. That's part of the process of the town. And that's... And so we're set up to do all those things. What we have, if you take a look at our website, and I would recommend that you do, if you're interested, is that when we've advertised for camping, and I'll tell you right now, we don't have a lot of people who want to do camping yet. We've got two people who said they want to do camping so far, okay? Two people. We're a month, a couple weeks away?
Six weeks.
Six weeks away from our event. We will get people who, if we continue to promote camping, and right now, as soon as we were informed that our gathering permit was being amended or was being changed, or that they didn't properly approve camping, we stopped promoting camping, okay? Anybody who's made an inquiry... We can't change our signs, but anybody who's made an inquiry on it, we've told them that everything's on hold as we address this issue with the town. So we've been trying to be respectful to the town with this because we're not looking to put on Woodstock here. We're not looking to put on anything that's going to be scandalous. We're trying to put on a respectable festival and to do it right. And I think that the twenty-three meetings we had, if I had to get this arranged, twenty-three meetings. We've got rules and regulations, camping rules, no pets, quiet times, children's, you know, limitations on when children have to be back at their campsites. You know, nobody can touch anything. No cutting of trees. You can't bring your own wood. We will get wood supply, okay? You can't bring wood so that we don't bring pests into the area. It's all been discussed. It's all been worked on. No firearms, no fireworks, no public intoxication, and no drug use. Any abuse of property or rules, we're kicking them out, okay? Campfire rules, again, we've... This has all been done with advice of the Fire Marshal's Office. Campfires, only above brown fire pits. And that's only depending on weather conditions. If it's too dry, it won't happen. You know, we're not doing this to get into trouble. We're doing this to do it so that we can do it again next year, and hopefully the year after that, and the year after that. So we're approaching it very cautiously, and we're approaching it with the assistance of the town. Would you have something to say?
Okay, I do want to point out that this is a generic text amendment. It's not... We're not approving your application.
I understand. I'm trying to get you to buy tickets.
I see that. But a lot of what you're saying, you know, would go into the presentation you make. If we did a text amendment, then you would have to go apply for a public gathering permit, and that's when you make all your points.
Okay, well, this is basically, like Larry said, you know, my name is Tom Deegan, and I'm the promoter, one of the promoters along the show. It's Silke over there. I've been doing festivals now for twenty-eight years, okay? Thank you. And what I'm doing is coming to you just very basically, and everything that Larry said, I just wanted to reiterate for one quick second. As far as camping goes, I have a letter here from my mentor, if you don't mind me reading it. And I think this is very important. I might clarify a little while to you. His name is Paul Benjamin Benjamin. Paul does the North Atlantic Blues Festival along with twenty-three other festivals in the United States. And it says, it's a quote, "I have been a festival producer for thirty years. The crowds that come to the blues festivals are fifty-five and older, well-behaved grownups with expendable income that is spent in the town." Okay? "And travel to different festivals near motorhomes. The average cost for a motorhome is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like Larry had said." He has a festival in Brooksfield, Florida, called Camping with the Blues. It's a three-day event with over a hundred and fifty motorhomes coming to it, a large number of tents. For six years, they have not had a problem in the whole time that that's been up and running. He attends festivals all over, and camping, I've never heard of any problems. Some of the camping things that he does, the festivals that Mr. Benjamin does, have been going on for over twenty years. One of the things that we did do this year is we have gone to the town, and we have been trying to get some of the restaurants, some of the people that own the businesses to go along with the wristband, which would give a discount to people that purchase a Two Left Feet festival ticket. And with that...
So the point is, and you're right, this doesn't address specifically camping. And the reason why we're talking about this is that there's been rumors out there that we're going to create a drug haven, a drug haven, and all that kind of stuff. It's just not true. There are rumors out there that we have tried to sneak things through. That's just not true. We're here. We've been open to the town. We've been open to the Performing Arts Center from day one. And we're happy to engage in any dialogue. We're happy to do anything that's necessary to preserve the property that we're being allowed to use. I'm a conservationist, too. I mean, we're not going to do... I live here. The last thing I'm going to do is allow anything to happen to my town. So having said that, we're pleased to bring the festival here. We're hoping that you will pass this amendment. Just to clarify, that camping, it can be allowed. I assumed that it was allowed based on the bringing of the carnivals and the festivals, et cetera, that had been going on in town, the fact that my kids camp at the town forest and in the park as they grew up. And we think that not only do we bring something valuable to the town and something that'll bring great economic development to the town over time, but we also think that it's something that is a wonderful thing. And hopefully, we'll promote music in town. As a five oh one C three, this is my last thing. And again, I understand it's not correctly germane. As a five oh one C three, we don't make any money. The only money that we get, other than the money that we need to operate the festival, all goes to charity. Now, having said that, we haven't made a lot of money because we're growing, but we are a charitable organization. We support Musicians Lifeline, which is a group that... Another five oh one C three that takes care of musicians who have health issues or disabilities, or somebody dies because musicians typically don't have insurance because they're self-employed. We also work with Teen Cancer America, which is working with children's hospitals, cancer hospitals, adult units, to provide assistance and support to build proper facilities for teenagers who are not appropriately in pediatric units or adult units. We're also, as a mission, working with the schools through music education in the schools. And over the next couple of years, we're going to try to get all the different area friends of music or similar organizations or performing artists to come and be a beneficiary of our festival. Because we're bringing not only blues, but we want to also promote music and performance in the area. So, thank you. Thank you.
And I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the commission asks for.
I have a question for Jamie, or two. Just, I guess, a clarification. So the text amendment, they're looking for a text amendment for no more than three consecutive nights on town Simsbury property?
Correct.
Okay. And not just them, but any persons looking to camp would still have to apply for a gathering permit? No matter what, okay?
If I may just try and clarify that a little bit. Under our regulations right now, we have provisions associated with camping and RV trailers and those that are written in a very prohibited manner. So with regards to potential past activities, like the Boy Scouts camping at Town Forest Farm, those also came to the forefront. This text amendment doesn't give anyone the immediate ability to do this without applying for a public gathering permit. One of the primary components of the public gathering permit are a number of boxes that have to be checked off. Police, fire, safety, health, as well as zoning compliance. So the code enforcement officer for the town has to check the box that the proposed activity associated with the public gathering is permitted. And this scenario wasn't comfortable checking the box when camping was associated with this activity. That would allow the public gathering permit to be issued if everything was in order and the code-compliant officer for zoning could be able to check the box because camping, under certain forms, would be allowed on town property. So the Boy Scouts could apply for a public gathering permit, or others could apply. There was mention of a bike club who did a race. They would potentially be able to apply. But it just doesn't give anyone top-line to do this. There's still another process that they have to go through.
Per each activity?
Does that process involve consideration of environmentally sensitive properties at the town nodes?
Yes.
In what way? How would that...
Well, again, it gets signed off by First Selectmen, Fire Chief, Public Safety. Also, we look at that review. And the permits are only issued for the particular event. It doesn't mean... It's not like a zoning application where it runs with the property. These are individual event permits. So if someone were to do something ill-advised, it may put their permit for the following year in jeopardy.
And who picks how... Like, how many? How is that determined? How many tents are going to be allowed? How many...
It may be subject to the facilities available.
It should also be an element of what the applicant would put into the public gathering permit and the Board of Selectmen can limit the number of tents, the location, all of those details.
I'm just wondering where all those things come into play.
All in the public gathering permit. And if, for whatever reason, the Board of Selectmen thought thirty was too many, they could say twenty, no more than twenty. If three days is too much, they say no more than two days. Two days. It's all up to the... This at least allows that process to happen and for them to check off the box. It's an exception to the general rule. Subject to the Board of Selectmen's, okay. And they limit on town-owned property.
And they limit how many vehicles are going to be parked?
Yes, yes.
So it wouldn't be conceivable that one year, we could have ten vehicles, but year two, we could have fifty vehicles.
That's correct.
So tell me, the next thing, could this land at Town Forest Park? If somebody decided they wanted to get twenty RVs together to park out at Town Forest Park and say they were having a fishing event, could they come in and fly?
Subject to a public gathering permit, yes.
And the same thing could happen on Curtis Park?
On town-owned property.
We'd also clarify what many groups are already doing and have been doing for many years.
Well, I think they've been camping. And, you know, I support that. But now we're adding vehicles into the mix, and the vehicles can land just about anywhere.
The Board of Selectmen could say tents only.
Okay.
No RVs.
So we're going to reserve all that, right?
Again, the key is to look at... This allows potential zoning compliance, where right now, we don't have zoning compliance. It still doesn't undermine the nature of a public gathering permit. So there's scope associated with that based on the facility it's being proposed for. We'll say a soccer jamboree at Curtis Park. There, you may be able to accommodate a hundred tents, but no campers giving facilities. Or you may only be able to want campers who have internal facilities because there aren't any facilities for a camper. So it is site-specific. And again, the health officer gets involved, fire gets involved, EMS gets involved, chief of police, Board of Selectmen, as well as our planning and development.
My concern is, I just want to make sure we control how many of these RVs My concern is, I just want to make sure we control how many of these RVs are going to be showing up.
And then, how is that enforced once?
No, the town, what I'm saying is, the town.
The town is going to re-engage.
And what is that process? After the fact, sort of, that didn't work?
Like, any permit, someone applies for a permit, they develop the scope of that permit, they make certain statements associated with following through on that permit, and it could happen prior to the event, with regards to enforcement, at the event, or post-event. If the public gathering permit also comes out of public safety, being fire and police, and if there, I'm sure if there is a public safety issue, and they were approved for ten camping spots, and there were one hundred in ten, I think our enforcement arm of the town would perhaps have issues with that.
And get involved.
And potentially get involved.
It's also somewhat self-releasing, because many of the groups who apply for this type of activity wish to do it the following year.
Absolutely, yeah.
And will work very hard, in our experience, to make sure there are no problems.
Right.
Campers, in my experience, do have a leave-no-trace ethic.
Yeah.
I've been involved in festivals, not unlike this one, in another town, and, you know, there were many people hired to clean up the area, and this particular festival didn't need anybody, because there was no trace. It's the ethic of camp, of camping community, that they don't leave a mess, they bring everything, everything that's brought in gets brought out. Any type of camping you do now, that's the ethic.
That's great.
So, the standards or the criteria for the public gathering permit are in place?
Correct.
But what about the Board's, the Board of Selectmen permission? What would the standards or criteria be for that? Would they be separate from the gathering permit process, or?
Well, it's the Board of Selectmen who ultimately approves a public gathering permit.
The Board of Selectmen and Minister of the Public Gathering Permit Process. So, what did you say? And the last box. So, zoning signs off, police signs off, and to our defense, our staff is involved. It just isn't an application, there's an application in almost every instance, there is a meeting of all the individual parties involved in signing off on this, to discuss the permit.
They can attest to, it sounds like.
Oh, yeah.
That's exactly, for this event. So, we're involved.
It's not a piece, it's not a piece of paper that gets passed around, it is a piece of paper that is coordinated internally, through departments and through the individual staff members in those departments. They all sit at a table and discuss the public gathering permit.
So, to clarify that, some of the current activities, like camping at Onion Mountain by the Scouts, is actually not allowed now?
It would clarify the fact that it is allowed under the conditions that have been explained, whereas in the past, it's-
This is bigger than the Blues Festival.
Right, see, I heard that's possible.
Much bigger. I also think the other events that were mentioned earlier by council, you know, some of the runs and some of the other events that have had camping associated with them, this would now clarify the process to get that all approved and formalized.
Any other people from the public like to speak?
John Cole, 26 Woodcombe Drive. Before I read my prepared statements, I would like to enter into the record a memo from the Chief of Police stating that he has problems with limited manpower for taking care of RVs and all other activities on the, specifically to the PAC. So, I would like to give this to the staff, or whoever gets the paper, to put into the record. I would like to give an historical perspective of the land called Simsbury Meadows on East Boulevard.
The town purchased the land from Mike DeRosa, $1.8 million, for a soccer field in town use. The Heartfit Symphony was looking for a new home in Simsbury to accommodate them. The town built a band shell on Simsbury Meadows. The recreation department could no longer with town staff accommodate the time needed for events. The town instituted Performing Arts Board to accommodate and oversee the logistics needed for the Heartfit Symphony patrons and collection of revenues from the events. September Fest started out as a family function with no alcohol, and morphed into a sale of alcoholic beverages to raise money from the event. Now, the S-PAC has charged people to enter the town events with all money going to the S-PAC, Simsbury Performing Arts Center. The 501(c)(3) Performing Arts Center was developed as an event planner alleviating town staff from time-consuming events. The town now has a contract with the S-PAC whereby the S-PAC leases the land for $2,500 a year for all events. All money collected from all events goes to the S-PAC, the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. Noted in the S-PAC 990 tax form, they have assets of $73,028. None of this is shared with the town of Simsbury, and the residents are prohibited from using the property before and during the concerts. Mosquito spraying is conducted before all events with residue on playground where children can ingest the residue. The dog park is affected with the spraying, which are allowed to continue with this activity. A gathering permit is required for all events to regulate the events on compatibility with town policies and regulations. As time went on, the S-PAC has morphed into concerts and events, with all money going to the S-PAC, where Dave Ryan is the president and Tom Vincent is getting a percent of the profits through his company, Vincent Promotions. The concerts under S-PAC direction has morphed into tailgating on all parking areas in town, taking businesses away from business parking, leaving them with no consumers for their goods. This is an unregulated activity that cannot be enforced, straining the police department resources. Brian DeVoe, owner of Fitzgerald Supermarket, in an email to First Selectmen Lisa Hevena stated, and I quote, "I just need to know that organizers care about the businesses they so negatively affect," end quote. This is not economic development. There are many events during the year under the S-PAC direction, such as road races, bicycle riding events, and other activities that are brought into town. There are golf tournaments, and soccer events, and other recreational activities that bring people into town. The Simsbury Women's Club has an arts and craft show that brings many people to town. The airport fly-in brings people into town. These events give Simsbury exposure with people from other towns that do not have negative activities that concerts bring to town. There is tailgating, excessive alcohol consumption, and pot smoking with concerts. Now, the S-PAC is sub-leasing the property to event planners for tag sales, et cetera, losing control of the events. Many town organizations will not go against any of the S-PAC activities due to retribution by Dave Ryan and Tom Vincent, since the fee schedule for their events is arbitrary. They do not have any set fees when you go before them for a planned event. What they say privately is not the same as their public face. They are caught between a rock and a hard place. The property has lost its mission for playing fields, town events, and family fun for residents of Simsbury. At this point, the residents cannot use the property under the management of S-PAC and are inconvenienced with noise, alcohol consumption, and drugs. Pot smoking has become the norm at concerts. The S-PAC is asking for the town to go down a slippery slope for the trail park, having unintended negative consequences. Now, the zoning commission is being asked to change the character of Simsbury forever with the trail park in the town Simsbury Meadows. There is a reason for the zoning regulations to omit having a trail park. It is a negative effect on the community. I am concerned that both Dave Ryan and Tom Vincent tried to deceive the PAC, the S-PAC Board, without telling them about the camping with RVs, tents, and campfires for three days, when they already signed a contract with the promoter. They also did not share this information on the permit for a gathering permit. Dave Ryan and Tom Vincent advertised the trail park along with the advertisement for Blues Festival in violation of the zoning regulations that Chairman Dave Ryan is supposed to enforce. The planning commission has forwarded their negative referral, followed their lead. The Farmington Valley Health District has stipulated that since there was no running water at the S-PAC, that the S-PAC would be required to have portable sinks for campers, including other stipulations related to health and safety of the community. Who will enforce these stipulations? There is concern that the RVs and tents will be staged in the wetland fields behind the garage. Nobody will be able to monitor what is brought into the RVs and tents, leaving the community at risk. The S-PAC has continually not regulated or enforced the activities of their concert patrons. There has been excessive drinking while tailgating and pot smoking at the concerts without any enforcement. The police department does not have enough officers to enforce the laws when thousands of patrons are participating in illegal activities, and the S-PAC is completely inept to enforce their policies. Before you now are another escalation of the events with Dave Ryan text amendment for a trail park that will be a detriment to the community and business for three days. Having out-of-town concert patrons with uncontrolled activities and not economic development, but changing Simsbury to Woodstock event. The people of Simsbury who paid $1.8 million for the field never envisioned having a trail park in the center of town for the express benefit of making money for the S-PAC.
Tony, are you almost done here?
For many years, I just have another couple paragraphs. For many years, the Boy Scouts have used a town park for one overnight activity. The Boy Scouts are Simsbury residents under adult supervision. The S-PAC and their patrons are not Boy Scouts. They are not the same as concert patrons, bring whatever into the community. The Boy Scouts will be able to continue with activities, since their activities consider grandfather activities. Nobody should equate the Boy Scouts to unregulated concert patrons. The Boy Scouts are not asking for a text amendment. Both Dave Ryan, Chairman of Zoning Commission, Tom Vincent Promotions have been deceptive throughout the process, knowing that a trail park is not allowed in Simsbury. Deception should not be condoned. At the last Board of Selectmen meeting, the discussion of a trail pack at Simsbury Meadows did not get a good reception. On Thursday, June 29th, Dave Ryan met with First Selectmen Lisa Hevena and Tom Cole. They had a ten-minute meeting in the Selectmen's office, several minutes after Dave Ryan left the building. The town attorney met with First Selectmen Lisa Hevena. After the meeting, the text amendment was brought to the planning department to include it in the July 17 zoning meeting agenda. There appears to be an excessive amount of political pressure to expedite the text amendment that should never see the light of day. I urge the zoning commission to deny adding the text amendment to the town zoning regulations. And I would also like to know if any of the zoning commissioners have had any conversation with either oral, written, or oral with Dave Ryan during the text amendment process? Has anybody talked to him about the process prior to this hearing?
Yes, I was told that I was going to be chairing the meeting.
Other than not talking about the text amendment?
No.
That's all, I'm not talking about that you should be the chairman, of course not.
Okay.
But I think that if there was any discussion, that should be noted. Please state, okay, if you could, you could state individually whether you did or did not. And the zoning commission should not consider whether they will offend Dave Ryan by denying the text amendment.
That's more than two paragraphs. Okay, I thought there was two paragraphs.
Design regulations are written to protect the health, safety of the community. Do your job and deny the request. And I'll post all my comments on Simsbury Patch and Twitter, John Cole.
Right, well, anybody else from the public, and let's keep them shorter, because we've got a lot of people that, and a long agenda here tonight.
If the commission played.
Well, we don't need a rebuttal, we don't need a rebuttal here, we just hear the public hearing here.
Just five minutes, okay?
This is not about, this is about the text amendment, which is, applies to all town property, this is not the public gathering permit.
Let me join John Cole, and seeing that the prosecutors, prosecution has testified, Mr. DiCrescenzo, and Mr. Rabbit, and the rest of them, and let me rise in defense of the people of Simsbury. But let me give you a disclaimer. My name is Robert Kalishman, I live in Simsbury. I'm a candidate for First Selectment of Simsbury, been accepted and duly noted by the Secretary of State, Town Clerk, and I will be on the ballot this November. Now, having said that, I watched the Planning and Zoning Committee last night, they ran it about ten o'clock. And what it was, it was the hearing of the Planning and Zoning, and they gave this proposal a negative referral. And they debated about it, and to answer your question, the question came up as to whether four votes would count, and they said it would. And at that, they came up and they voted, and it turned out, four, four, four people were in favor of the motion, and two people were against. And it was decided that it would be a negative referral. Now, they went through a lot of things that you people didn't talk about, but let's mention one thing. There's been, there's been a hearing, and with a grad gathering permit. There was a gathering permit, and I'd like to share this with you, if you may. When this started, I didn't know what direction to go. So, the first thing that hit my mind, being a Marine, and being in the field, and knowing what sanitation can do, and knowing if you don't have proper sanitation, a lot of people get sick. So, I called the Health Department, and the State Health Department, and they said, "Well, you're the state, but your town is in with three or four towns." So, I called Canton. I spoke to the lady in Canton, and I said, "What about these health problems that could exist?" And she said to me, "Go to Jerry Toner, he's in charge of health for the facility in Simsbury, for the facilities in Simsbury. Jerry Toner is the chairman of the gathering committee." So, naturally, he's going to give it a bill of health. But the point is, that should be mentioned here, you're being misled. In fact, you're being a lot closer misled, because this was all gone, it was in front of a gathering permit that was resuscued. And I spoke with the fire marshal, and this is what you should be concerned about. He said, "Bobby, what are you getting all excited for? We got RVs parked already that park down there." I said, "What do you mean, you got RVs? How come they park down?" He says, "I don't know how come," he says, "but they park down, so what are you getting all upset about? They're there already." So, talking about being remiss, somebody's got to be remiss. We don't have any enforcement. Now, taking that in consideration, how can you compare Boy Scouts that take merit badges for fire building, for sanitation, for water conservation, and compare them to a crowd that's going to come in in an RV? And you talk about, well, you're going to be five or 10, we're talking 100 RVs here. Where are you going to park them down there? And the other thing, you know, you're tongue-in-cheek, you mentioned about conservationists. Do you realize where they're going to be putting these campers? That's all, you just take two minutes, and you're at the Farmington River. And he can talk about all the woods they want, and people, campers tell me, they go and they grab wood, and they do a lot of things. And if you think somebody gets up at 12 o'clock at night, if they're going to walk to the facilities, they're going to walk over to the river, and they're going to go into the river. And then, we talk about, oh, we got to save the river for drinking. And here we go, we're going to have people defecating and peeing in the river. Is that what we want? And the other thing, you take a situation where it's just life-threatening, and I feel threatened, I feel my life is threatened.
Can you direct it to the, to the actual text amendment? We're not, we're not, we don't judge this public gathering permit, we have nothing to do with the public gathering permit.
I feel that you issuing this license-
We're not giving a license, we're just allowing, in the future, for the Board of Selectmen to be able to allow parking, camping on a town park.
And the other thing that you should bear in mind, you're being misled, because this text amendment, if the planning commission advisors and Mr. Rabbit's advisor was there, according to him, this text amendment, when it goes in, you just can't say, "Stop. I can take a boombox and go up to Terriffill, that small little park in Terriffill, and you could have a concert up at, in Terriffill."
If you get a public gathering permit.
Pardon?
If you get a public gathering permit.
No, they're misleading you, this thing, this thing-
No, that's what, that's what the text amendment says.
Well.
Okay. It's five minutes.
Yeah, we're running over time here.
Well, and I think you're being discourteous to me, all this time that you spent on these people that have, that have a little in, and I'm a citizen, and I feel that I have just as much right as they have at this hearing. You know?
Right, we all do, right?
And, you know, you get my Irish up, you won't have it. I'll go to an attorney, and I'll put an injunction, because I have rights too. And I'm, and my rights are the people of Simsbury. It's wrong. You're down there, taking a facility that was given to the people of Simsbury for their enjoyment, and you're turning it into a, God knows what. And you go back to, and thank you for Woodstock. Let's go to Woodstock.
Okay, can we keep it to the text amendment? We're not talking Woodstock.
Addressing the text amendment, if you go to the text amendment, that text amendment is self-perpetuating. You just can't say it's for these people, because it's going to be for anybody that comes along.
Anybody that gets a public gathering permit, yes.
What makes you think they won't get the public gathering permit?
Well, that's your-
They got it once, why can't they get it again? Or why can't I get it?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public want to address the text amendment?
I'll take that as a shot.
Anybody else to the text amendment?
I'd like to, and I won't-
All right, we've got to keep it real short here.
I'll be available.
Because this is, it isn't really about you.
I'm not germane, but he's germane.
It's not a rebuttal, it's, it can't be a rebuttal.
I'm just, so, the purpose of the text amendment is to allow the enforcement, is to allow discretion to whether or not to allow camping on town property.
Right.
So, it gives, it doesn't give the discretion necessary to the commission, the commission has to check compliance. It does give discretion, obviously, to the fire department, the police department. The police department would not approve- department. The police department would not approve us if we hadn't provided the necessary assistance, as it would with anybody else who's applying. So it gives the discretion to the appropriate commissions to make sure that the proper safeguards are in place and the first electment or the final sign-off. So I think it's well drafted and protects the town. As a citizen of the town, I--
Thank you.
All right, anybody else that wished to speak? Anybody on the commission wish to?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, where's the agenda here?
Should we call back in the other?
Yeah, is that where we are?
Or do we?
Right here.
Yeah, I lost my agenda.
Right.
But that's not--
Yeah.
Okay.
And do we reseat them, or they reseat them?
Yes, this is unclear, but I guess we'll reseat Mike and Dave and replace Tom.
Thank you.
Have a good time?
I think so.
Good to get them.
Thank you very much.
Didn't see what they meant to tell me about it.
Okay, we are now finished with the public hearing sections of this evening's meeting.
Old business.
Old business. We have application--
Did you need a leave again?
Seventeen twenty-seven of Mark Demming. So I need to recuse myself again.
Why didn't we see this coming here?
Why didn't we know that this was coming?
I also need to recuse myself.
This is a ticket booth.
Put Tom back in.
Yeah, we like--
All right, and we will reappoint Tom. Tom for, for Mike Doyle. Okay, application seventeen twenty-eight of Mark Demming, agent, town of Simsbury owner for a site plan amendment for the construction of a ticket booth at the Performing Arts Center of the property located at 22 Iron Horse Boulevard, known as Ancestors Map H-09, Block 226, Lot 03, Ancestors Map H-09, Block 226, Lot 04, Zones, Simsbury Center Zone 3 and SC4.
It's application seventeen dash twenty-seven. You said twenty-eight, just wondering.
Did I say twenty-seven? Sorry.
It's all right.
Looking ahead.
Yep.
Actually, we've already continued this, we continued the public hearing on this, didn't we? It was not a public hearing, it was just a site plan amendment, right?
Mr. Chairman, regarding this application, we continue this from the last very late scheduled meeting due to posting the property.
Okay.
The application, you do have a draft memo from staff with a recommendation motion. That motion was not in a favorable manner.
So--
So the design review board gave a positive referral on the design and site of this facility. Available after any questions.
Okay, does somebody have the--
I don't have the draft memo.
Well, I need somebody else to make it.
I make a motion to approve application seventeen dash twenty-seven of Mark Demming, agent, town of Simsbury owner, for a site plan amendment for the construction of a ticket booth at the Performing Arts Center on the property located at 22 Iron Horse Boulevard, Zones SC3 and SC4. The site plan amendment approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, a pre-construction meeting is required before the start of site work. Number two, an administrative zoning permit is required. Number three, minor field adjustments to grading and landscaping may be based on field conditions upon written approval from the town planner, who has been given the authority on behalf of the town zoning commission to act on their behalf.
Give a second.
Second.
Guess we'll take Donna's.
You didn't want to take Donna's. You always take Donna's side.
Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or is it unanimous? Okay, if we can bring them back in for a second time, and we'll reinstate the two commissioners and replace Tom.
I'm doing this again one more time tonight, too.
We should have read ahead. All right, so we're at seventeen twenty-eight.
Thank you. Okay, our application seventeen twenty-eight of Diana and Paul Booton, a special exception. We have closed the hearing, and we are, I guess, very ready to take action on this particular one.
I do, I do have concerns that you have a business and a residence area that has five people coming into it. Normally, when we do businesses in a home, it's one person or two at a time, five or six. I'm not sure if this is what a neighborhood would expect in their residential area.
Well, yes, to that, I would say, one of the neighbors is here, clearly for it, but also that they did let the neighborhood know, and the neighborhood, and there was nobody against it. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think what she's doing fits--
Small class.
Yes.
I mean, it's like--
It's like five cars.
Yeah, that's five cars, yeah, which, there's a lot in a neighborhood, I think.
Coming and going.
But they have a driver with the capacity to handle it, so it's not like--
Right, on their pictures.
Yeah, on their pictures. Yep.
Do we know how often a day?
Do we have one?
How often a day would you be having it?
You can't ask them questions anymore.
You can't ask them questions anymore.
But it said from five to eight at night.
Five to eight at night.
Is what the application was.
I didn't read that.
Yep, limited.
So it is limited.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with it, too.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve application seventeen twenty-eight of Diana and Paul Booton owners for a special exception pursuant to Article VII, Section C1, the town of Simsbury zoning regulations for personal training space, home occupation on the property located at 14 Pond Side Lane. Special exception approval is subject to the following conditions of approval. Administrative zoning permit is required. The business hours of the operation are limited to Monday through Friday, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Training sessions will not have more than five participants enrolled during each individual session. Training sessions will not overlap starting and ending times. The total area of residence which will be devoted to the business shall not exceed 168 square feet.
Second.
Second by Donna. Comments or all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed at six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a new application. This is Andrew Quirk, the drive-through facility. DRB has not reviewed this application, and I think their recommendation would be to table until our August seventh special meeting. Everybody agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a motion? Some move? A second?
Second.
By Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Ditto.
Okay, I think we're at the same, let's have the same motion.
I move we table application seventeen thirty-one until our July seventh meeting, our August seventh meeting.
Seven? Special meeting, is that my P M. Second?
Second.
Second by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing. Application seventeen thirty-two. Okay, for full liquor permit for Bennys. I'm ready to vote on it, are you guys?
Yep.
Donna? Okay, you have a motion?
There was a, was a motion here because we wanted to clarify the--
We didn't have clarification prior to this evening on indoor versus outdoor space. If you were to make any favorable motion on this application, staff would recommend that you clarify that it is a special exception for both the tented, I suppose, for the indoor restaurant space as well as the patio space on the southern portion, outside portion of the building that exists.
Okay, I move that we approve application seventeen thirty-two with the conditions clarified by Jamie. That includes indoor and outdoors on the south patio.
The existing southern patio. I'll second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed at six, nothing. Thank you. Now, we have the application of--
Yep, so I move we table application seventeen thirty-three until our August seventh meeting at 7:00 p.m.
And seventeen thirty-four.
Second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's table, six, nothing.
And I move that we table application seventeen thirty, they're both seventy-fifth. Which one did I say? Thirty-four. Thirty-four until our August seventh meeting, special meeting on August seventh at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, six, nothing. Okay, we have application sixteen seventeen thirty-five--
And you need a leave.
--and--
We need to leave ourselves.
Third dance.
Got to plan this better.
I know. All right, and then we, in the absence of the two commissioners, we reappoint Tom to set for Tom Doyle.
Thanks for being with Tom.
All right, application seventeen thirty-five. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, you are acting legislatively, so it requires a majority of the commission, not seated members of the commission, so you would need four, just four favorable votes to pass this.
Anybody want to speak to it?
Everyone, I'm trying to get this to say. I asked Jamie my questions to clarify that it is for no more than three consecutive nights. That in addition to that, whoever it is has to apply for the public gathering, and then we went through all the steps that they have to get in order to get public gathering permit.
I think my only concern is the police chief's memo that came out, and so we're pretty close to crystal clear that he's going to have a lot of say in whether a permit gets approved or not, right?
They either check the box or don't check.
Okay.
And again, that's not this application.
Right.
For clarity, we do have the council here who may be able to weigh in that as well as you.
What I'm saying--
Public gathering permits, but I have--
Oh, no chief, a no check by Chief Ingersson would make.
No, no, Chief Ingersson checked, you know, public gathering--
I just want to make sure he has the support, that he has the authority to--
What typically works is the applicant for the public gathering permit will meet with the chief, and the chief will say, "Well, here's what I need to check the box."
Okay.
So it's a give and take. Is each of his concerns are well within his area of concern, and, you know, the public gathering permit process has been in place for quite some time, and it works quite well because it relies on that discussion and compromise and negotiation, and Chief is very diligent about participating in that process.
Yeah, that was, I've heard the public, and I saw that memo, and, but the text amendment is not changing that process at all. This is just allow, clarifying it and allowing for that potential with the safeguards that still exist.
Right.
Yeah, so for the public, anyone that was opposed to that particular application can go to the selectmen and address it there, but that's not our purpose tonight.
Right. I feel more comfortable with the text amendment, knowing that it has the additional layer of the gathering permit and all of the, all of the checks that have to go with that.
If we did have amendment tonight, we do need an effective date. Do we have a--
Yes.
And what would be set for an effective date?
Pardon? Twenty-fourth of July.
Record?
Again, we could publish, the way statute reads is that any text amendment has to be at least one day after the publication. We should be able to do that publication by this Friday. Worst case, it goes in Saturday or Sunday, and we would have that day. I'll slip it for the twenty-fourth.
Okay, do we have someone who wants to make a motion here?
Do you want me, I can make the motion, and I would be reading all of what it includes?
You could just make a motion to approve the application.
Okay. Seven twenty-four. I will make a motion to approve application seventeen dash thirty-five of Chip Nieram, agent for proposed text amendments to Article 5, Section B dot one dot C, temporary uses of the town of Simsbury zoning regulations. Temporary camping, including both tent and recreational vehicles, may be permitted for no more than three consecutive nights on town of Simsbury-owned property, provided that the organization is granted permission by the Board of Selectmen and applies for a public gathering permit from the town of Simsbury and Article 6, Section C of the town of Simsbury zoning regulations, to add the following language after "trailer camps," unless expressly permitted elsewhere in these regulations on a temporary basis. And this would be effective July 24th, 2017.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me, Anna, listen. Five books. Okay, let's just check the rest of this agenda here.
Yeah, they're just the two new ones to receive.
All right.
And then all the other, right?
Yes, so we can bring them back in. Okay, and we'll reseat Mike and David and unseat Tom.
Again.
Sorry, Tom.
Thank you.
For the third time.
Again.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, thank you.
Just dumping a lot of work on him.
I'm not telling you. You have to wait for the public notice.
Okay, we're at application--
We're just receiving, yeah, we're just, the last two.
Are just receiving.
I think so. Seventeen dash thirty-six.
Oh, this is chilly. See, they need to have a--
Right.
DRB approval, so we should table application or defer, table application seventeen thirty-six.
All right, well, and I move that we table application seventeen thirty-six of Carrie Anne Cannon until, I don't know, until what meeting would that be?
No.
Not the, a special one that would go, does it have to go to the, to that one, or can that go longer?
You do not have sufficient time to continue the public hearing right now. We don't have an extension from that.
This doesn't have a public hearing.
Doesn't need a public hearing.
There's a site plan amendment. There's a potential, what we'd like to, Mr. Chairman, this is a relatively simplistic referral to the design review board for its assignments, lighting, and paint colors associated with the building. It's the exact same facade in the existing commercial building, so if we could take care of this on the seventh.
Okay, so then table it to our special meeting on August 7th at 7:00 p.m. of the meeting.
Second.
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, application seventeen thirty-seven.
I still like--
For a site plan amendment to change the existing-- The design review board has not passed on this.
So again, you will be within your stretch of time frame to table this and defer until you, on August 7th. Chris Mallard is here this evening from Phase Zero representing the applicant.
Okay, Chris.
So, this is Jamie Sam, Chris Mallard from Phase Zero Design, here representing Lisa Nacherin, who's an owner of Fiddler's Green in Simsbury. And what she's looking to do is take the existing property, 750 Hat Meadow Street, which is this residential building--
So, this is Jamie Sam, Chris Mallard from Phase Zero Design. Here representing Lisa Nacherin, who's an owner of Fiddler's Green in Simsbury. And what she's looking to do is take the existing property, seven fifty, Hat Meadow Street, which is this residential building, which just happens to be, you know, bound to the existing building behind it, which is where Joe's Pizza and several other restaurants are located. She wants to take that property that's currently zoned as a house, previously was zoned as a business before that, and turn it back into a, a business building. In doing so, that's why we're here tonight, is to basically change the use. And that kind of turned effect, everybody started looking at the property in terms of, is there enough parking? Where's the dumpster located? And so on. With this change of use, the intention for the owner is not to touch the property at, at all. As we look at it, the number of parkings bases within the immediate area comply with the allowed zoning regulations. The property for both the proposed use at the house and all of the existing uses within the building are looking for about a hundred and fifteen parking spaces. However, within the five hundred foot radius around the property, there's over four hundred parking spaces. So we're, we're well within the number of parking spots required. One other item that had come up, or has came up, is the dumpster that's currently on the property. Let me rephrase that. The dumpsters that's currently behind the property. Right now, there's two dumpsters in two spaces, which is along the road. I forget the name of the road.
Railroad State? Railroad, Railroad Street?
There, there's two dumpsters on public parking spots. At the time, this plan here is actually the plan that was submitted when the property was developed back in two thousand and four. And there was a single dumpster shown there. However, that dumpster's on public property. The intent for the owners, they want to keep the two dumpsters there. So there's a dumpster shown here and another one that's immediately adjacent to it. So basically, don't touch the property at all. Leave those dumpsters alone is, is really the primary goal. However, we recognize that those dumpsters are on public property. We have a memo from Lisa Hevner saying that she's willing to enter into a shared parking agreement with the owner. And that's also based on the Board of Selectmen review and approval. If that for some reason is not approved, we wanted to propose a secondary option for relocating the dumpsters. So we would, that secondary option would be restoring both of these public parking spots back to the public and then taking away two parking spots closer to the building. Bringing that dumpster, you know, closer to the dining, just because that's now on the property owned by the tenant in that town property. My opinion, I think the opinion of the owner and many other people would rather not bring the dumpsters close to the building. We'd rather leave it where it is. Obviously, we understand that there's, you know, legal rights to where the dumpster can, can be located. And that's the intention of why we would enter into a shared parking agreement with the town. That's really it. You know, the other drawings are really drawings of the interior of the building. Not necessarily anything that you guys need to look at. Again, to simplify, we don't want to do anything. The owner doesn't want to do anything to the site. The only issue that really has arisen is the dumpster location.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The theory was two thousand and four, that site plan was approved by this commission showing the dumpster located on the town property. There's an elevation drop between the subject property and where the dumpster location is. It's lower in elevation than... The town is willing to negotiate with the owner for a shared parking agreement because the dumpster location is advantageous to the town as well because the parking spaces that would be left parking spaces are immediately adjacent to Eno Hall to the north. And it's a much easier walk to Eno Hall to the north than it would be around that elevation drop to the back. The dumpster location in the intervening thirteen years has worked well. And what didn't happen thirteen years ago, and we don't know why, the zoning commission approved the site plan, but there was, the next step was to follow up and enter into a license agreement or a lease agreement or something with the town that allowed it to stay where it is. That was caught by staff that there is no such agreement. And the town, at least speaking with the first selectmen, and this will be brought to the Board of Selectmen, this mutual parking agreement, which would allow seniors and other users of Eno Hall access to those two parking spaces above in exchange for leaving the dumpster below, is, is very much favorable to the town according to the staff that runs Eno Hall. And can't say what the Board of Selectmen would, would do with the request, but it is the first selectmen's intention to bring this license agreement to the Board of Selectmen for action to allow the dumpster to stay right where it is. It's also in keeping with one of the core principles of the Simsbury Center Zone, to enter into these shared parking arrangements so that there is not more parking in asphalt that need be. The parking needs are complementary to each other. Eno Hall largely involves light events, but the use of these parking spaces is largely day events. And the need for the parking spaces for the business that would go there is largely evening events. So that complementing the parking aspect is also part of this as well. I just want to give you that background so you wouldn't think that the town is indifferent to the dumpster location. It's that lack of formal written agreement over the last thirteen years which brings the dumpster issue in front of you today.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just add one thing in, in the presentation you have tonight is, in any favorable motion, if you were to make that, staff would recommend that you approve the primary location of the dumpsters on site. The applicant should be in control of the entire approval process and not delegate away approval to a third party. So if...
I agree.
So, option one is the applicant shows the dumpster location internal to their property. That is one hundred percent in their control. You could include in a motion, we haven't drafted one for this evening, but include in a motion that would allow the applicant, in the alternative, to locate them in position B, which would be within a town right of way, subject to the appropriate approvals from that authority, which would be the Board of Selectmen. Doing it that way would allow the applicant to move forward. And in any instance, if that agreement ceased to exist, they would already have approvals to move the dumpsters onto their property and wouldn't have to come back to them.
Sure.
Okay.
So if it was a five-year lease or a ten-year lease and something happened in that five or ten years, the landowner wouldn't be coming back to the planning, the zoning commission and saying, I need to move my dumpsters. They would already have a pre-approval and approved enclosure that they could move it to on the property. However, if an agreement existed and it's executed, they would be able to utilize alternatively.
Basically moving the dumpsters where they are today.
And provide the appropriate enclosure.
So it's been okay to have dumpsters on town property without a tent?
Do it.
I am all ears.
Do I need to refuse my second? We're getting to nine o'clock, I can see that.
We're past the clock.
So if we... Okay, is staff's recommendation that we defer this to our...
August seventh.
August seventh meeting. Any motion to do that?
I move that we table application seventeen thirty-seven until our August seventh meeting at seven PM in the special.
Yes?
I may just have a moment. If any commission members have any questions or issues associated with what they've seen tonight, please let Mr. Mallard or myself know so that those questions don't come up two weeks from now, which would cause a further delay potentially.
Yes, I do have a question. So up in the left-hand corner there, you're showing what?
Uh, this corner here?
Yeah.
So that was with the assumption that we had to move the dumpster. The fence enclosure around that dumpster would mimic the fencing that's right now, that is currently on, Eno Hall was recently installed about a year ago, which is town property. That, that fence that's shown there is right along the edge of that property. So this fence enclosure would match up with that and be more harmonious.
What's around the ones now?
This is, it's more of just a wood, style made fence. It's wood slats, really.
And you would keep that? If you kept those?
The fence that's there now, the intention would be, it would be repaired.
Did you finish your motion?
Yeah, well, I made my motion, then we'll hear your second.
I'll second it.
Okay, this is to table application seventeen...
Table until August seventh.
To August seventh. And before, we are, any more discussion or questions for Chris?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, general commission business. We have been asked by the Board of Selectmen to look at the Deepwater Wind project. And even though we have no statutory ability to rule on it, the selectmen would like us to give them an opinion about whether or not it would be permissible within our current zoning regulations and any other thing that we feel is, is useful for the town in addressing the Siting Council. Sir?
Would you find it useful for me to review the statute that applies to the Siting Council and the standards in that statute inform the commission of what the rules of the game are for this type of application?
Certainly.
Yes.
It's significant the role the town will play as a party.
Yeah, well, it's... As they say, it gets complicated. The Siting Council operates under the general statutes and...
Siting Council statute's been around for about forty or so years. And Siting Council regulates the location of facilities. And that's a defined term in the statute. And to cut to the chase, what is being proposed by this application is a facility. Therefore, it falls under the jurisdiction of the Siting Council. The Siting Council has different levels of applications which they review. The, and different types of approvals that they issue. What we're most familiar with is the so-called certificate approval. A certificate of approval by the Siting Council involves a great deal of review of a very detailed application. And even though this application is twelve hundred pages long in its totality, this is not a certificate level review. This is declaratory ruling level of review. And the reason for that is this facility is less than sixty-five megawatts. Therefore, it falls under the declaratory ruling section of the statute. Now, the question is, what role can the town play in reviewing a declaratory ruling type application? And I, what I, what I'm here to tell you is that there is a section in the statute, sixteen dash fifty X, which talks about the local input on, on, on applications for facilities. And the Siting Council, and it's clear that under a certificate proceeding, local land use regulatory bodies like yourselves have a role in reviewing those applications and issuing what's called orders. The Siting Council takes the position that that section, Siting Council staff takes that position, that that section does not apply to a declaratory ruling type application and that the zoning commission in this case does not have the authority to review the application and issue orders. We have looked at it carefully. We find no direct statutory language that supports that. And we also find no case law that directly supports that. However, even where zoning commissions may issue orders on applications for facilities, even in the certificate process, the Siting Council still has the, may agree, disagree, or completely ignore the orders of local zoning. But I don't want you to think that under sixteen dash fifty X, that as your legal counsel, we have concluded that you have nothing to say about the project. And we would encourage you to say whatever you would like to say about the project in terms of whether or not this project complies with local zoning, whether or not it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, whether or not the aesthetics of the project are appropriate for its location. And send that to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen will then include whatever correspondence, motions, resolutions you pass to the Siting Council as the expression of the zoning commission on behalf of the Town of Simsbury. We think there is a colorable argument to make that even though as a declaratory ruling process, the zoning commission specifically has the ability to comment to the Siting Council about consistency with zoning, consistency with the plan of conservation and development, and other issues that you may find important. The weight given that communication is entirely up to the Siting Council. And it's also very clear under the statute that their jurisdiction under state law preempts your jurisdiction. You know, you're used to getting applications and considering them as you did tonight under the zoning regulations. And, you know, the Zoning Enabling Act gives you the authority to regulate land under the regulations. This is not that, but it also is not a process for which the statute and statutory scheme is not interested, let me put it that way, in the opinion of, of local zoning authorities like yourselves. Like I say, if you were to pass a resolution stating your position on the application, correspondence, a letter, there's no prescribed form, I believe the, the Siting Council would take that under advisement as part of the record. The Town of Simsbury has applied to become a party to this proceeding, which gives it the right, if granted, gives it the right to participate fully in the proceeding. The Town of Simsbury has also requested a public hearing, which is not automatically granted under declaratory ruling portion of the statute. And that public hearing will be held in Simsbury. And those two applications are on the Siting Council docket this Thursday, July twentieth. We believe we will get favorable results in both of those. So the Town of Simsbury will be at the table before the Siting Council. And as you know, the first selectmen and the Board of Selectmen have cast a net very widely for local commission input, boards and commission input. And I'm here as the town attorney to tell you that I don't want you to believe that the statute precludes any meaningful discussion and comment you may have on this application. And I'll reiterate it. The weight given by the Siting Council is up to them and their staff takes the position it takes. However, if there was an appeal, the interpretation of that statute is done by the courts, not by the Siting Council, which is an additional reason, in my mind, someone whose job it is to build the record on behalf of the Town of Simsbury, to make that record as complete as possible in the event of an appeal. I don't want to suggest there will be an appeal, but I can't, just as we encourage complete records for zoning commission matters, we would, we are encouraging a complete record for the Siting Council on docket as well. Any questions about that? I know I went over it quickly, but...
What, what is the timing for all this?
Yeah.
Well, the statute says within sixty-five days of the filing of the application, any orders and rulings of local, sixteen dash fifty X says within sixty-five days of the filing of the application. Again, if we take, if we take the position that sixteen dash fifty X applies... Again, if we take, if we take the position that 16-50X applies to this proceeding, the timeframe is 65 days, which...
On the June 28th or whatever.
On the June 29th filing. So you've got time. You've got this meeting, you've got, you having a special meeting on August 7th. I don't want you to think you have to do something tonight to meet a deadline. You do not.
That's what we're...
If you need additional input, if you need our help, you know, a review or some memo or something explaining what this is all about, we're happy to provide that to you before you take any action.
Is there authority for the Siting Council to extend that if...
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, in the work I do, you're always asking for extensions of time, and if need be, we could ask what, not that we know it will be granted or not, but I think 65 days probably will give you adequate time to review the application. Although it's 1,200 pages long, the bulk of it is 65 pages long. It's about this thick, and the narrative, the narrative plus the plan tells you a great deal of it. Not that I'm not encouraging you to read all the entirety of it, but those 65 pages will at least give you the executive summary of the proposal.
They're having a hearing? When?
The tentative schedule for a hearing, and I, it hasn't been set yet, but it looks like the public hearing will be in September. They've tentatively set a date for September...
I saw that.
We will ask that that be pushed back a bit.
Okay.
Give the town more time to prepare whatever we want to put into the record.
Okay.
I'd like to see it a couple of weeks later. I think if we ask for that, we'll get it.
Okay.
It will be here.
But that's already been...
No, that comes up Thursday. The Siting Council...
The application to have it here...
No, if it's held, it will be here. The first session, if it goes longer than that session, then the rest of it will be in New Britain, 10 Columbus Boulevard, I think it is. Anyway, they won't, the first session will be here, and if it goes beyond that, we'll make sure everybody knows where to go for the second session.
Whether or not the Simsbury is granted party status is...
That will be decided Thursday. I feel very strongly that the Siting Council will grant Simsbury party status. And with that comes the opportunity to fully participate in the proceedings.
But the Board of Selectmen will need our input probably by the middle of August.
That would be ideal, yes.
So we have to discuss at least at our next meeting?
Yes. You have tonight, and you have the next special meeting you're having.
And that's it?
Well, or if you need more time, you know, we could try to get it for you. I don't want you to think the deadline is a statutory deadline, as you know those well, but you also know, in your case, you sometimes extend those. I would...
We just don't meet. We just don't have a lot of meetings coming up.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
Any other questions about process or content?
No.
Thank you.
Comments from commissioners on the situation? We have been asked by the Selectmen, they all signed the letter, to replies to whether or not we feel that the application would be allowable in some way under our current zoning regulations. And any other feeling that we have about what types of studies of other aspects, environmental or whatever, we think might be necessary or might be appropriate, we should make those recommendations.
Well, so, for example, if we decide, yeah, well, it doesn't fit, we could still make recommendations in case they ignore us as to what we would want them to do. Is that what you would?
You could argue the alternative.
Yeah.
If we find that it's not consistent with the zoning regulations, and three orders of it, two thirds of the proposal is in R40, you could comment on that. You can comment in the alternative. In the event that it is approved, we'd like it to be approved with the following considerations and setbacks and screening and all those sorts of things.
I mean, there are things that we can do to make it nicer for people if it gets approved.
If it gets approved in spite of...
And I think staff has worked on some of those things, so we can get some advice from staff about things that might make it better, should the Siting Council go ahead with the application.
I do think it's important, though, for the zoning commission to say whether or not we form the Siting Council, whether or not proposed activity is allowable under Simsbury zoning regulations. We can help you walk through that. Siting Council, other portions of the statute require the Siting Council to give due consideration, I think is the term, to local zoning. This project is a bit unusual in that part of it is an industrial zone area, another part is in a residential area. And as someone that will present the council case, having the zoning commission give an opinion or its comments on whether or not the proposal is consistent with the town's zoning map, I think is, would be valuable input for the Siting Council.
I think it's also in conflict with some of the planning...
It may be.
Town's, you know, plan of conservation and development.
Those are the type of things that you are uniquely charged with looking at and giving input.
Now, in their application that I read, they say that our regulations permit utilities anywhere in town with a special exception. That's their assertion, that's the applicant's assertion to the Siting Council.
Even if the utility doesn't serve us the town?
The question, the threshold question is, is this proposal a public utility? And we can answer that question for you.
Okay.
We do not believe it's a public utility.
Okay.
If it were considered a public utility, it would be allowed by special exception in any zone.
In that zone, okay.
It has to be considered a public utility.
If it was ever source operating it for their benefit, for their customers' base.
Right.
We think this proposal is for a private power supplier that will send energy to a utility, which just so happens to be...
Outside of...
Adjacent to the parcel in the form of the substation. But the utility is ever source. We don't think, we disagree, we don't think this proposal is a proposal for a public utility location as used in the Simsbury regulations.
Okay, so staff will help us in identifying the key.
Is there anything in particular, I'll make an assumption that you're perhaps going to table this and add it to your special meeting agenda on August 7th, in the short time between now and then, is there anything specific you would like us to delve into, whether we can accomplish that specifically in the two weeks, the drive?
Well, I think we should define what's in the industrial zone versus what's in the R40, and get our hands around how much of that is in each one of those zones.
We can clearly do that.
Oh, and they, they did that in their proposal.
Yeah.
No, but from them. Let them send it to us, you know, officially.
And any other questions, just send them to Jamie's office, and if it's something we need answered, we'll answer it. We'll get it back to you in time.
Does everybody, we, anyone needs any information? We do have hard copies available in my office. We have an extra copy with the clerk. There's a copy, a hard copy with the library. If it's not there today, it will be there shortly.
Is it here this afternoon?
Okay, it is officially there now.
Well, everybody got a copy in the email, right?
And it, we did provide the link.
Copy of Oink.
Copy of the link.
I can scan what I printed out to you, and then you can circulate it to the commission.
They have the link.
We have the link, we looked at the actual application.
Did you say you had printed out a hard, a hard copy or a hard copy? I printed out, I have the full application on our document... The executive summary? It's really the application. I didn't print every exhibit, because that's 1,200 pages, but I had them all. And what I printed was the application and the narrative portion of it. I didn't print the full-size maps, obviously.
But if someone's having difficulty looking at one of the maps online, we have those 11 by 17 in our office.
Okay.
Sometimes it's easier to flip through those one afternoon in our office than it is to keep scrolling back and forth in a digital format, probably.
Do we have a motion to table this to our August 7th meeting, which is now growing and growing?
I move that we table the discussion of the Deepwater Wind Solar Project until our August 7th meeting.
Are we going to have time that night? Are we going to have time that night? Can we invest some time now? And then, you know, I'm tired, want to go home, but this is a big deal, and, you know...
Well, I need information in front of me to review, so...
What information?
No, I'd like to have the information in front of me. I don't have my computer with me, and I don't have the hard copies with me, so we can go through it as a group. But I think if you can send us that information, we can start looking it over, preparing for it. We just don't have any more meetings.
Mr. Karen, to Mr. Doyle's point, if anyone has any questions, any issues, you would like clarification of something you're reading, something you're looking at, I would also encourage you to go to Deepwater Wind's webpage, because they have some additional visualizations that, and other items that may or may not be...
What areas of the regulations should we be looking at to verify that this is a supported use in our town, or no?
Currently, it's in two zones. It's in your I zone, one, and it's in your R40. So if you looked at all of the permitted uses in the R40, the only, in all of the special exceptions allowed in the R40, the only one that comes close to looking like this is a public utility. Counsel and I have talked about the definition of a public utility. There is none in our zoning regulations, so you fall back on what is generally applicable in Connecticut. And typically, public utility is, and Bob correct me if wrong, is more on the distribution end, that's your ever source, and then you have suppliers to that system, which is on the power generation side. Millstone is not a public utility, it's a power generator. Some of the resource recovery facilities or resource reduction facilities that collect trash and generate energy, those are power generation, they're not public utilities. So that's where counsel is leaning towards with regards to their interpretation of regulations. This is a power generator to a grid that is undistributed by a public utility.
So if we give Bob that from us about these zones and that...
We are already doing that.
That you are already saying it's not a...
We are looking at the definition in our regulations regarding public utility.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's ideally you would have the benefit of what your staff is already doing before you issue any statement of the project, because to think you would remember this direction.
But if we have that opinion prior to the meeting, we will distribute that. And similar to the discussion is, look at what's allowed in the industrial zone, and you allow warehousing, manufacturing, and other uses, permitted uses of right administrative process with certain setbacks. The other aspect I would employ you to do is go and look for the landscape code. Might try not to grant. If you can find the landscape code in our zoning regulations, please point me to it. Okay? Because landscaping and buffering and a lot of those things to visualize the screen project refer to your design guidelines, which is a guideline.
Right.
Doesn't carry the regulatory weight of thou shall plant a deciduous street tree 40 feet on center around every parking lot and around every access road. Carries a lot of weight, but doesn't carry the regulatory rate, weight of a specific code with a specific requirement.
Okay.
So Simsbury has done well with all of their developments, using their guidelines and steering development to meet a particular standard. But I don't have a page or a section I can go to. Same thing with architecture, it defers a lot of that to the design guidelines. So it's a balance within the regulations, so with regards to landscaping and buffering, look at the details contained in the design guidelines. If you don't have a copy of that, it's on our section of the town's webpage within that format. And make reminds me tomorrow, we'll send a direct link for you to the design guidelines, because that's a component of the zoning regulations. And look at the requirements kind of put here, if it was an industrial-type use...
Right.
What would we be requiring someone to do in this industrial zone? What type of landscape, what type of buffering, what type of screening, what type of architecture would be associated with this? If they were doing a fence, what would we be requiring them to do? If they were doing screening, would it be a fence, or would it be a combination of urban, burns, landscaping, as well as a fence?
Yeah, I would think so, because that's what we require in most situations. But this also sounds like it's a fraction of the space of the entire acreage.
Some viewable from the road, some not viewable from the road, some viewable from abiding properties in some areas, not...
I meant just the I, the I one, yeah.
Yeah. The I roughly begins at Hoskins Road and heads almost parallel to the International Skating Center and Dorset Crossing, the south side of Dorset Crossing.
Okay, this is, just go back to process. This is not an application to us. We're kind of treating it as if we were reviewing an application without the benefit of a presenter. What is our, we have people here from the audience that are probably interested in saying something. What is the process on the discussion for having a public hearing?
You have no application before you, so it is...
So there were courses, a hearing that's coming up, a public audience that they're going to hold in September, right?
Yeah. They, again, the town has requested a public hearing. We anticipate that they will hold that hearing. They've given us a tentative date of September 12th. That wasn't our date, but that was a date...
That's a date they offered.
From the Connecticut Siting Council staff, where the public would have a complete opportunity to testify in front of the Siting Council with regards to that.
Yeah, that public hearing, similarly for the public hearing view hall, where everyone can write and have their say.
But we're looking to do input before then.
We've also, from the staff's perspective, we've held one meeting during the day with regards to buffering and landscaping, and we had scheduled a second one coming up on the 20th, a week from tomorrow, either 5:30 or 6:30, I have my calendar in front of me. Again, to further the discussion on landscaping and buffering, and what is perhaps more appropriate in a rural suburban community versus a more industrial urban setting. If this were to occur, how would you solve the view from Hoskins County and also some of the abiding properties?
So if this were an application that came in to you, what other things would you be working on other than the landscaping and buffering stuff?
Landscaping would be revealing environmental, engineering's looking at that in a conservative, cooperative manner with our department. Traffic during construction, but there's minimal traffic after. It's in essence a utility truck perhaps once a day, or two...
Yeah, I think I saw on the note, seven maintenance truck that comes and just checks the panels.
Noise, lighting.
We check noise, we check lighting, we check security. Again, with regards to lighting, none is proposed. With regards to security, they have a six or seven-foot-tall perimeter fence internal to any screening. And there's a perimeter access road. We look at dust control, we're going to look at phasing in construction, but like erosion sedimentation control, downstream impacts with regards to, again, construction, pre and post.
As a construction project, I mean, these are all the components...
And you would also look at if it could actually land where they're trying to land it?
From a use perspective.
From a use perspective.
But is it allowed under current zoning, or is it not allowed under current zoning?
Well, that's why I think if they break it out, and they are, between the industrial zone and the R40, at least we can have that to fall back on to.
And given similar to the fact, like someone could propose an 8-30G, very large-scale project outside of the norm of a zoning code or R40, and we'd be putting our hats on under 8-30G, what are the implications to the town? And if this project moved forward, how could it be... And if this project moved forward, how could it be softened, improved to be more compatible?
Yeah.
Versus the original proposal?
So obviously, the POCD is a resource, our zoning regulations is a resource, the proposal's a resource for us to look at. You guys are obviously resources. What else would be wise to be...
There is some background information about the nature of projects or projects like this. They're all, they're kind of all over the world, really. There are some studies and some technical information about them, and probably one, and I think a lot of that has been posted, you know, best practices, some of the technical elements of it, you know, what material are these things made out of, that sort of thing.
And alls you have to do is Google negative impact solar farms, and you're going to get a hole, because I did that, and you can Google positive impact. There's a lot of people around the country that think they're great. So, I mean, it's, you really just got to inform yourself and, you know...
I think it depends on location.
And it depends on what the community's wants are.
Right. Yeah, but I think our rule is being asked is to look at our regulations and decide whether or not this fits in our regulations. And honestly, it looks like it does not fit in any of our regulations unless you're to use this special exception for utility.
Other than the industrial zone.
If there were no Siding Council, you know, if they had to come to you...
Right.
For a permit, how would you look at it?
They'd have to come to something quite different than what they've gone to the Siding Council with. I mean, they'd have to have zone changes, text amendments, and a lot of things in it for which I think it's pretty hard to imagine. It'd be foolish to try to guess what they might have to do. But it seems to me it's, it's not something that fits pretty straightforwardly. It doesn't fit in our regs.
Well, there's a lot of these going up. I mean, you drive to Massachusetts, they're all over the place now.
Interesting you say that.
Well, yeah.
Because they have laws on the books that don't allow them to use farmland...
No.
...to do this stuff.
But you see them all, you see them all over the place.
Yeah, but not of this scale.
Right, right.
You know, it's, it's the size that's on the building that I work at, where it's producing kilowatts, not megawatts.
Well, I'll tell you what, there's one on the Rhode Island Massachusetts, or Massachusetts border, 146, which is pretty large, pretty large piece of property that's generating electricity. I'm not defending it, I'm just saying they're, they're becoming much larger scale than...
Residential?
What?
Residential?
I don't know what the property's owned, I'm just saying you're seeing these in larger scales in a lot more...
It's not a discussion.
No, it's not, yeah.
It's a public hearing. But let's...
I'm not a proponent.
Let's decide what we're going to do about this and move on.
I have more information now, so I appreciate everybody's time. I have more information now, so I appreciate everybody's time.
Okay. So we have a motion to table it? Did we, did we have that? He made the motion, did we get a second?
I'll second.
Second, Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll table it until August 7th.
Here.
We have one more item.
Oh, a couple. The appointment of the design review?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a recommendation to appoint Annalise Frank to replace Tony Dreplick, who died. And his term ends December 17th, so it would be to finish his term, and then she could be reappointed if necessary.
It's a big set of shoes to fill, but her resume was...
She's a good person, yes.
Yes, it was...
Highly recommended.
Highly recommended.
Yep.
She's a very responsible person. We have a motion to do that?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Second by Kevin? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, 6-0. She's appointed to replace Tony Dreplick.
6-0, straight across the board tonight.
And we had one more thing, was the Lee Huffman, what was the correspondence? Well, that was just saying that...
Again, Mr. Kieran, the correspondence from...
Lee Huffman from Pullman and Connolly was basically advising you that they had submitted an application to the Connecticut Siding Council regarding the solar farm project.
I, I did see that after I said I didn't see it. Anything else tonight?
I made a motion to adjourn. I know Kevin...
Jackie beat him.
Kevin wanted to do it.
Yeah, I'm on vacation that week, so that stinks.
Okay.
I don't think it matters, but...
I can send an email to include with the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's, there's opportunities to communicate, which is good.
All in favor?
I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I had to beat Kevin.
You did.
Dave delegated that to me.